Close session and be out in a little while.
Thank you.
Is, a patch upon patch with a hole in the middle. Um, all of the, that new machine or machine that was purchased by this county a couple of years ago, um, is doing an total inadequate job. Um, an example, and also the people who are doing it are doing an inadequate job. Because, a good example, in a rainstorm, I was going down John Smith while one of the big rigs that are going on their way to the dump went by. They had just put, just pea gravel in the holes. Consequently, when the truck hit it, my car was peppered with pea gravel, nicking the windshield and the hood of the car and the side of the car. I've had other major damage this last year alone, over almost a thousand dollars to front end work, um, things on the road that slashed tires. Um, you talk to any of my neighbors and we averaged at least four flat tires in a six-month period. This is crazy. This road economically should have been done from Fairview all the way to the dump when part of it was repaved. It needs to get repaved, and that's why I'm here today. And like I said, I'm tired of the, um, damage to my car. Um, like pea gravel getting, you know, knocked into it, just instead of putting, um, the asphalt down properly, just filling the holes with pea gravel, obviously it's gonna come out. Some of the holes, um, range in size from two feet across, but also in the depth of the holes. Now, we're having a problem with because of the lack of, of the sheriff being able to get out there. We have teens that are now drag racing up and down John Smith at night. You can hear them and you can see the lights on their car. I'm just waiting for another accident. We've had several out there where they've hit telephone poles and things of this sort. So, please, 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 put this high on your agenda to finish repaving John Smith from where the new asphalt is down to Fairview, to make it a much safer road, and I really feel that it should come out of the gas tax. And, I feel too, that the dump is responsible because of all of the, the big rigs that are going to the dump. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing there's no more speaker cards? Department and head announcements?
Uh, Chairman, I think you have one more.
Oh, sorry. Of course, we'll let you speak.
I'm very sorry. Uh, I just wanted to, um, let the Board of Supervisors know that we will have the Moonlight Walk on the Deansa Trail this evening at 5:30. We've been monitoring the weather very closely, and it may be a little cloudy, uh, but it was last year also, and we had a great, great evening and a good turnout. So, uh, thank you very much, uh, for the help with the Matilda Bus. Uh, that's the, out from the jail where we have workers come, uh, when asked. And, they cleaned up both sides of the road, and it's, it's looks nicely groomed and it'll be, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more speaker cards? Okay, seeing no more speaker cards, we'll move on to, um...
Department, Department head announcements.
Management announcements?
Yeah, Department head, so yeah, so I'd like to invite up Joe Paul Gonzalez, our Audit Director Controller.
Good morning, Chair, Board of Supervisors. I just wanted to, uh, update the Board on the status of the Airbnb, um, our efforts to get Airbnb to, uh, begin paying TOT. Letter was sent out to, uh, the, to the Global Head of, of the Tax Department for Airbnb this week, um, and, well actually, last week. Um, we are requesting that, since they were acting as a hotel, that they comply with the county's ordinance. Uh, we are looking to, to, uh, we're asking them to fill out a tax form, a tax return for, um, the past three years, and we included, uh, proof of, you know, the presence, uh, this is, you know, the Airbnb site, uh, the presence of, of, of offerings for, you know, basically hotel service, services. Uh, we've asked them to fill out the forms for 2016, 2017, 2018. Those three years were at eight percent, and we included a new form, uh, for 2019, which is now at twelve percent rate. We also sent a letter to HomeAway.com, that's another service, um, which, uh, they're, the, uh, headquartered in Austin, Texas. And, in addition, we sent the, another letter to Expedia, the Expedia Group Incorporated, um, with the same type of, uh, same type of requirements. Uh, this was, this is for the, um, VRBO, they're the owners of that, of that company. So I just wanted to keep the Board informed of our, you know, where we're at. Um, we'll, uh, you know, we'll see where this takes us.
Uh, through the Chair. Thank you, Joe Paul, for coming in, I really appreciate that. That's, uh, important. Do we have any leverage, authority, if they just don't respond to us, for example? Can we, um, have the operators that are operating in our community stop operating until, you know, just, you know, just in case these folks don't think that we're big enough or important enough for them to respond to? Do we have, do we have any leverage?
Well, that's a good question. We, we really haven't gotten that, gone that far yet, because really we're, uh, as it was described to me, we're on a fishing expedition, uh, to see, see what we can catch. Um, ba- basically, they're operating, you know, the, the people who are actually doing the rentals are operating outside of the county's ordinance. So, um, I would say that, um, perhaps County Council can, uh, can, you know, you know, step in here and, and...
I'd just like to, just, just to think about it, just in case, 'cause I, I think you had mentioned at our last meeting that you guys had sent out a, a letter, and I think that was about two weeks ago now. And, um, not, I know, they're a big corporation and they're, they're probably busy, but if we don't hear back from them, I'd like to take it a step further if we can to, I don't, I don't know what the next step is, but I'd like to think about it.
Yeah, let me know in the coming fact, and we'll, we'll find out the answers about whether it be a code enforcement action or whether it be, um, another type of action to the public.
Awesome. Thank you very much for you and your team for looking into that, 'cause I, I think that's an important source of revenue that we may be able to add on to our accounting budget with. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for bringing this up, Supervisor Gilio.
Thank you, Joe Paul. Yes, we have another announcement out of, uh, CSDC, we, uh, Health and Human Services, Enrique here.
Good morning, members of the Board and the public. I wanted to share with you a very exciting announcement that we received, uh, recently. We were notified of two awards for applications that we submitted to the state. One is in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars for the Tenant Base Rental Assistance Program. This program will assist, uh, individuals or families who are experiencing some hardships. This program will provide rental assistance, uh, for up to twelve months of rent support, so that's very exciting for us. And the second, uh, program that got approved is in the amount of one million dollars for the First Time Home Buyer Assistance Program. So we will work concurrently or in partnership with Housing Coordinator Jamila for the implementation of this program, and this program will be focused on the Southside Projects for the Self Help, uh, Home Project that is, uh, being planned over there. So I wanted to share that with you and, and the public.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you, awesome. We have another announcement out of our Tax Collector Treasurer's Office, Melinda Casillas.
You've gotta be able to beat that, Melinda. Million five.
So, I just wanted to remind the public that, uh, the second installment of property taxes is due on April tenth. Uh, we have a...
That's more than a million five, you did it.
We have a couple of different options, uh, for you to pay those property taxes. You can pay them online, there are some convenience fees associated with that. You can mail them in, um, we've received quite a few, uh, more, uh, mail in the last week or so. But please, just make sure you check with your, uh, post office when they actually postmark, uh, the mail that you put in there. You can come into our office, obviously, um, anytime, up until, uh, including the day of the tenth, in order to pay your property taxes. And then this year, um, because, um, parking is challenging around the courthouse always, and because our, um, employee parking lot is closed right now due to the solar project, so it's a little more challenging to find a parking space and come into our office. We're going to actually have a drive-through drop-off. Um, you can come through the alleyway between the old courthouse and the, um, uh, Office of Education slash Library Building, and we will have a station there where you can actually just drive through that alley and drop off your, um, property tax statement, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, your property tax payments. We will not accept cash in that line, but you can come drive-through and drop it off, and we will, you will receive a, a stamp that says it was received, um, only on April tenth are we gonna be offering that. So, um, if you have any questions, um, concerns about your property tax bill, uh, and your payment, so please always call our office and we can help you with any questions.
What are the hours of operation?
Pardon me?
Hours of operation?
Um, eight to ten, I'm, I'm sorry, eight to five.
Eight to five, thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Uh, the last item, uh, for your Board is a correction on the consent agenda. It's item number twenty-two, others out of the Budget Office. Um, the actual amount shows fifty-two thousand eight hundred dollars, that there needs to be a change to sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. So that's the only correction on the, on the agenda. Item number twenty-two, and it's fifty-two thousand eight hundred to sixty-nine thousand six hundred.
Sixty-nine six, thank you.
Uh, that's all the announcements, Mr. Chair.
How about some Board announcements, starting off with, uh, Jaime Delacruz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I really do appreciate it. Um, first, I wanna thank Christina Soto and her staff at the Community Homeless Service Staff for allowing the, the San Benito County Niners Organization to host a first annual operating Help Feed the Less Fortune. We were out there on Sunday providing carnitas with salsa and, I, I, I'm guilty, I did eat a lot of that carnitas, but we were helping the homeless and it was actually rewarding to see the faces of, of the members of our community help. They were very, um, can you put it this, they appreciated that members of the public actually help them out. On one hand, help them out at least once a day, once a week, once a month, they, they will appreciate that we actually go out there and talk to them. Because sometimes, members of the homeless, the basic things that we take for granted, they have, they struggle every day. And, and I really wanna congratulate the San Benito County Forty-Niners Organization locally for inviting myself, actually inviting Supervisor Peter Hernandez and City Council Member Roland Rosendres, and we were served. And again, at the end of the, the end of the day, they actually provided carnitas for us to eat, so it was a win-win. We, we sat down with good company and we ate good food. Mr. Chair, um, on a serious, on a serious note, um, on March fourteenth, the Ad-Hoc Committee through your leadership, Supervisor Hernandez and myself, with the City Council Ad-Hoc Committee, um, attended, um, attended three sports complexes, one in Trent Creaks, in Santa Clara, the other one was Big League Dreams in Manteca, and the third one was, uh, Mestigo Fields in Ripon. And, the reason why the committee went out there to view the fields was to see what it was like firsthand, uh, how the fields were being used. Just, just watching the kids play baseball, soccer, and softball was exciting. I, I think we can do something in our community too. Just think about having a sports facility in our community, and then right along the way we'll have a River Walkway Terrel, where you can take your horse, you can walk with your kid, and, and to the left or to the right you can see a sports complex, and just to see the number of kids playing baseball, uh, football and, and soccer, it'll be, will be rewarding, Mr. Chair, and I think that through your leadership, I hope we can continue this, um, expedition. Um, we just wanted to see the sports complex, the facilities, how it worked, what type of play, what type of, uh, involvement and interest the community had. And every city that we went to, it seems like everybody had their own identity. Trent Creaks was about a wheel, where, I don't know if anybody's gone to Trent Creaks is a wheel, and then there's like six fields rotated around the wheel. Um, Ripon was about their community, um, and then the, uh, the Big League Dreams was about the field dreams, where you have the Detroit Tiger Stadium and you have eight, ten-year-old kids playing out there. It's just a dream come true for a lot of kids. And for San Benito County, there's just so many things we can think about, and we can think of, you know, um, the Black Rally events, the, uh, earthquake, the softball tournaments, there's just so many, and there's opportunity and so many economic opportunities for our community. So, we'll be coming back, Mr. Chair, with more information, but for right now it's just, you know, to touch bases of what we did, uh, March fourteen.
Thank you.
And then also, I attended the Community Action Board Meeting on March fourteenth. And I really wanna thank Andy Anderson from that department, and I know Enrique's on the audience, Enrique Arrolla, and Elias, the camp manager, he's, we have a good, good, good group of individuals in our community, especially in our county, so I really wanna thank them for their invitations. Um, and then also, I met with Enrique Arrolla and Cynthia Hohaus on trying to see how we can provide, uh, create programs that can benefit local folks. And, and what I mean by that is that, is that every time that we approve houses, there's always single, single-family homes, over the seven hundred thousand home, and a lot of our local folks can't afford these homes, so through Enrique and, and hopefully with the assistance of Cynthia Hohaus and other, other departments, we can come up with some type of program that it can provide housing for our kids who live with us, for, for our friends and families that have lived here for a long time. Um, and just a matter of how we find a program and how we find the funding mechanism is, is the real challenge. But, other than that, Mr. Chair, I have nothing else to report.
Supervisor Bertello?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I probably should have mentioned to you this morning, I, and I apologize to you and the Board, and especially the public. Um, this past week, uh, we lost a, a real important Hollister citizen, uh, Leonard Paletti, uh, former Mayor, Council Member, very active in the community and different organizations, and, um, he passed away this past week, I think his services are tomorrow. And, um, you know, he, um, you know, he, he meant a lot to a lot of, a lot of us that had been here for a long time. He operated the ambulance company for years and years, and, uh, um, he was a real good man, and, uh, I, I hope everybody kinda keeps him in their thoughts and prayers tomorrow, and, uh, remember his, uh, good, good contributions to our city. Um, I attended a RCRCE, uh, meeting, uh, last week. It was kind of a quiet meeting, uh, probably the biggest significant change was that we had a, a policy changed that on selected, uh, Governor appointees that are up for confirmation, RCRCE is a, to support, um, certain candidates to, uh, key positions at, at the state level. And that's pretty significant because CSAC and other organizations, League of Cities, uh, really don't, uh, put themselves out like that. Uh, RCRCE, it's a growing organization, and, uh, it has quite a bit of influence, and, and think we could build on that by, uh, being very, uh, deliberate in, in, uh, some support of, uh, key officers and departments, uh, that the Governor puts up before the Senate for confirmation. And while I was there, I just kinda snuck in, saw, uh, Assemblyman Rivas, and, uh, I, I think it's a... And I think it's always a good idea to see your, you know, state representatives when you're up there. And we talked about transportation, roads, of course, and housing, and concerned that, you know, possibly the governor wants to tie SB 1 funds to housing, which I think that would be a real detriment and a poor decision, especially for small rural counties. Supervisor Hernandez and I had a meeting last week with the county council's office, the ag commissioner, RMA, as far as working on the hemp ordinance as the ad hoc committee. And I think what we're do is start with a temporary moratorium so we don't get people out there just planning in areas that we, it's not, you know, we don't want to see. So, I think that we'll probably have the moratorium, I hope, by the next meeting. And we'll continue to work with the relevant department heads to develop that ordinance as quickly as possible. I don't think it's a B complex, nothing like cannabis, of course. So, we'll be able to get that to the board as quickly as possible. I don't know, Supervisor Hernandez will add to that on his report. But, and then the last thing I would like to request is it's time for the board to have an update on the commercial nodes on the 101. I have concerns with the consultant that's working on this project, that it's turning into a career. And I don't want it to be turned into a career. I think it's time to be able to get that zoning done and so we can move on to getting some businesses out there and applications at least. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. And the nodes will hopefully be on the April 2nd agenda.
Pardon me?
The nodes will be on the April 2nd agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, definitely a lot of different elements to speak about. I'll try to be really consistent and pretty much on focus. But, you know, yes, we met just last week with county council and RMA and me and Supervisor Bertello. We actually even had a prospect for hemp cultivation. I believe they're also looking to do, correct me if I'm wrong, the yeah, the extraction process with the CBD oils. And so, we're learning all the elements, and there is a little bit of confusion as far as how to separate, you know, cannabis and, you know, hemp. So, and just, there's questions even amongst the staff on zoning. And so, we're working out the details, definitely working hard at figuring out where actually one of the goals is for us to go out and visit these sites, or proposed sites, Monterey. It would be obviously a cannabis site, but even see how they relate and how we would implement something successful as far as an ordinance goes. So, and then I also attended a budget meeting last week at the probation department, it was really informative. It's actually brought me back a little bit to when I first started serving and I started first at the probation department, filing papers and just doing little things, but ultimately, I learned a lot about the, what the probation department does and how they help our community. And one of the things that really stood out to me in that budget meeting presentation was the unintended consequences of AB 109 and decriminalization laws, and ultimately, the local communities having to scramble to try to figure out how to deal with these cases and the added responsibility, basically, of it. So, that really encouraged me to realize that doing things like getting involved with, you know, an organization like the Niner Empire would seem to be really organic. I mean, they're Forty-Niner fans that love the Forty-Niner team, but they're also very much about working together and ultimately serving the community, which is why they did that event at the homeless shelter. And it was really eye-opening how much these folks really care, and it was really encouraging. So, I was, at that point, I found myself really realizing that, you know, folks like that, we have to stay connected with and encourage them and help be a support to them so that they can do what they do. And they actually even asked us, you know, please stay connected with us because we really want to do more. So, it was really encouraging. But on the element of the ad hoc, yes, we went to the three different complexes. We learned a lot. We met with the owner-operator of the first one of the Twin Creeks field. He's really diversified that whole field or that sports complex, which was pretty amazing how he, it started off with baseball and then, you know, gravitated to softball, and now they even have, they've redrawn the line so that it actually supports even soccer. And it's funny, you can get one field and you get two soccer, you know, one baseball field becomes two soccer fields. So, it's added basically more activity, which means more traffic, which means more revenue, right? So, getting to the point, it's tourism for our community, I think, is a big opportunity. And when we visited, that was definitely what was on my mind, really considering how we could bring that to our county and really sell it as it's a sports complex, it becomes a benefit in a very diverse way. You bring, you know, you tie it into the right location, you know, as a small business owner, I know that if the location is just right, which I believe it is, you know, we have a property already outlined to do that, then we could find ourselves having really good exposure right next to the competition swimming pools at the high school and ultimately being such a benefit where there's a cross-traffic, you know. And the goal is competition sports. We already have the Vets Park field, but, yeah, we're piecing all the elements together. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, I think it would be the will of the board to maybe amend that ad hoc to be, to include maybe conversations about a TEL Center, which is the Technology Education and Learning Center. I visited years ago with city officials and the mayor, you know, the city manager. We had the city engineer, I think, went to Monterey to the CSUMB campus, and we visited their TEL Center over there. It was pretty amazing. I mean, they, the reason why I think it's so successful, not only is obviously it was where it's located, but they've allowed, they basically encouraged it to be education-focused, but it's also a library. So, it becomes a multi-purpose facility in that sense. And then they obviously become extensions for, you know, other universities and stuff. So, there's a lot of appeal to that, I think, in our community, and it presents itself as a community benefit, not just for education, but it's a technology focus. And being a library, then, you know, you serve a lot of different purposes. So, I thought if we could include that in the conversation, especially on the heels of this sports complex, I think we could learn a lot more about how to basically, you know, have that central location of downtown being a lot more vibrant, and that would really help supplement a lot of things. And I think it would even bring to the table the schools, which I know that would be a needed asset to make that work.
I don't have a problem with that. Jaime?
If you give us the blessing, I'll definitely.
Okay, I'd give you guys a blessing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It doesn't need a vote, I mean
He's the chairman.
Ad hoc committee. All right, that's right, you're right, I'm sorry.
Can I make a suggestion on that for you guys? Because I know there is an effort with the Friends of Library to build a new library, and they're mobilizing for fundraising and that sort of thing. Can I make a suggestion that perhaps they're either part of that committee or you meet with them?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
The more, the better.
Yep.
Good idea.
Anything else? Supervisor Hernandez?
That's it, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I've had a busy couple of weeks. I'll just kind of go over some things quickly and then get into the details on the things that matter that we had more detail on. So, Supervisor Bertello and I and our county team members had a landfill ad hoc committee. Nothing really new to report, other than what we've already talked about, just moving along in the process. Hopefully, we'll have something to bring back to the board soon. We had an AMBAG meeting. The chairman and I attended AMBAG over in Monterey County and met a lot of our peers and learning a lot about that organization. It's a massive organization, and I'm trying to navigate that and learn how to best bring benefits back to San Benito County. I went on a tour of the jail to get an update on construction, where we're at, and what the future needs are going to be. Like Supervisor Hernandez mentioned, with AB 109, we are now shifting state prison populations to the county level. And we are now going to be housing folks for several years in our county jail. So, that's a whole different animal, so to speak, with Title 15. There's a lot of regulations that we have to comply with, we don't have a choice. And if we don't comply with them, we're going to open the county to severe liability and severe financial penalties. So, we need to make sure that that's on track, and they're doing a good job to manage that. I'm really proud of the sheriff and his team out there. They're really working hard to get that ready. It'll be ready soon. And then also, the better side of it is the programmatic side. So, they're working with, you know, Gavlin College is one of the ones that stood out. They don't have an agreement yet. They're working with it to bring education into the facility so that these AB 109 folks can have education while they're there, learn a trade perhaps. And when they are released from custody, they have a marketable skill to perhaps prevent future recidivism. So, that was great. And along with that, that came from my budget meetings, I wanted to thank CAO Espinoza. And I'm looking for Stuart, because I know he's around here somewhere. He's our numbers man back there, and he's been doing a great job. Actually, Stuart, I received a lot of compliments from department heads and their team members about your engagement with them, the fact that you're meeting with them on-site and really engaging and seeing what they need to get that and bring it back to the board. I wanted to thank you for setting those up and then also bringing those, bringing me along with you, I appreciate that. And CAO Espinoza, thank you for being at those as well, and thank you for your commitment to those folks. It means a lot to them. Real quickly, downtown, the Chamber of Commerce hosted a Mansmths ribbon cutting. So, if you don't know, the Aroma Cellars in the downtown is now a barbecue restaurant most of the days of the week. So, you can go down there and get some good barbecue from Mansmths. This Saturday is the Furball, Pet Friends Furball, at 5:30 PM at Ridge Mark. It's one of their biggest, I don't know if it's their biggest, one of their big annual fundraisers. So, I'd encourage folks to take a look at that again, Pet Friends Furball, this Saturday at 5:00 PM. LULAC hosted an ethics training on Saturday, and I got to tell you, we've been to several of these, we're required to go. And it was, it was very informative, actually. The guy who did the presentation, I don't remember where he was from, but he went into a lot of detail. And one of the new things I learned is that the FPPC is either changed or looking at changing. This is something I got to confirm with our county council on the whether or not you own property within 500 feet of a decision. I think it's actually expanding to 1,000, or it has expanded, maybe. So, I need to get some guidance on that, so we can learn more about that. That was one of the newer things I learned coming out of that. Downtown, we had a prescribed burn update. So, we had a lot of the, all-county residents, but a lot of South County folks were there, learning about how we can legally prescribe burns so we can reduce the fuel for wildfires in our areas and also to help the soil so we can have healthy soil. So, I went to that to support them, and there's a good program in place. And they're looking at, essentially, in layman's terms, creating a node for San Benito County to authorize these prescribed burns and a system to do that, so it's legal. And then there's a way, if you do it right, and you follow the rules, and if your fire happens to spread, that you limit your liability. So, you're not, you know, going to lose, so to speak, the ranch because you started a prescribed burn and it jumped on to another piece of property. There's a way to do that where you can limit or eliminate your liability. So, if you're interested in that, please let me know and I can get you in contact with the right folks. Last night, we had a really informative community input meeting. And I want to thank our county team members, John Gerton, Ray Espinoza. Melinda Casillas was there, and I apologize for not introducing you. I didn't see, kind of till the end there, sorry about that. I appreciate you guys coming out. And we had Caltrans come out and talk about the south highway 25 curve correction down there that failed. You know, if you're driving down there past Pinnacles, you see the land that collapsed down there. So, it was great to hear Caltrans directly, number one, take responsibility, and number two, kind of tell us what their plan is for the future to get that resolved, and also take feedback from the community members. And then our CAO provided a quick county update of how things are going and some of our economic development projects. And people were really thankful for that, so I wanted to thank you for taking your time to come out there. And then one last thing for CAO Espinoza, I'd like to learn why the John Smith Road project was not on the agenda that we have, only one person showed up today, but I can tell you that she's not, Mr. Dale was not the only person who I had spoke with and let him know that it would be discussed and there would be a plan, and we'd have at least some momentum to move forward after today. So, if you could look into that at some point and give me a report back, I would really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I have nothing, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. If you're not familiar, these matters shall be considered as a whole and without discussion unless a particular item was removed from the consent agenda. At this point in time, do any of the board members wish to pull anything? Mr. Hernandez?
So, I had some questions on 25
25?
15, or 24, I'm sorry.
24, okay. Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yes, I got an email from a member of the public asking me if we can pull out number 15.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Bertello?
12.
Supervisor Gilio?
15, and then I'm going to recuse from 23 based on this new 1,000-foot rule. I have a home that might be within that area, so I need to learn about that more.
And just for informational purposes, he did say he would recuse himself, but he does not have to leave. And we can still pass as a whole.
Yeah, for consent.
Okay, we'll start off with 23, okay. So, we have 12, 15, 23, and 24. We'll start off with 12, Fish and Game.
Can we prove the consent?
Oh, Mr. Chair, you want to prove? Oh, okay. I was going to, okay, that's fine.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 12, 15, 24, and 23.
Can I make an addition, just to clarify that we captured the new amount on that consent agenda item number, what was it?
22, with that amendment.
22, yeah.
Fifty-two, eight to sixty-nine-six.
Yep, let's do it.
And I'll second that.
On favor?
Yes, aye.
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 Five-zero. Now, we'll move on to number 12.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Fish and Game Commission approved the budget transfer in the amount of $100 to purchase three digital trail cameras for a total amount not to exceed 600.
Yeah, and I know it's just a small amount of money, but it's an important amount of money. And I know the chairman of the Fish and Game, or Fish and Game Commission is here, and he may want to just say a few words about, you know, that our commission's vision on how that is to be best utilized. And we don't get a chance to hear from our Fish and Game Commission often, so I thought I'd just take the liberty of it.
Floor's yours, sir.
Yeah, the request was for the three trail cams. Fish and Game budgeting issues are similar to many of the other government departments you find. And there's a, they have somewhat some restriction on their law enforcement side and a lot more on the biological side. And we don't have a warden most of the time over here. We share, actually, one warden with Monterey County. The low starting wage limits the ability to move in this area because of the cost of housing. So, most of the guys that have the opportunity to move here don't choose not to, but to go to rural counties where they can get housing at a much lower cost. Any rate, they work closely with our sheriff's department, and the need for trail cams to be used for law enforcement is a vital part of them being able to make their convictions. Public may not realize, but we get, whenever there's an infraction and a fine that goes with a Fish and Game violation, the county and the Fish and Game Commission receives half that money. So, all we're doing is investing in that money into those trail cams, and we actually will probably get a good return back. But it'll minimize, it'll help with the lack of personnel out there, and it'll help the sheriff's department and put in the key positions. So, that's what the request is for, and that's why we chose to help the Fish and Game in this instance in their budget.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Any public comment? Bring it back to the board, any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman, but I want to thank former supervisor Place for his years of dedication on the Fish and Game Commission, as well as his fellow commissioners. It's, they do perform that job with a passion, and I appreciate it. And if there's no other comments from the board, I'll make a motion to approve item 12.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, five. Aye. Five, zero. Move on to number 15. Health and Human Services Agency approved contract with Shipper Design in the amount of 12,000 for the production of an informational video for the Health and Human Services Agency. Let's start, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll, did you want, did you want to let Enrique maybe share a little bit before?
Sure.
Just so I can get feedback and then, you know, know how to?
Sure. So the intent is for us to highlight the many different programs that Health and Human Services Agency is providing to our community. So we wanted to have a video production to make available to our public, to our clients, in our lobbies, and just in general, highlight our programs and services.
Thank you, Enrique. So I totally support and respect the intent. I think it's a good idea. You know, there's nothing better than having a good message that connects with the folks that you're serving so that they could obviously use your services better or know what the services are. So I'm not, the question isn't about the, the intent. It's more about the money. $12,000 is a lot of money. You know, we, I, I've had, I've hired folks myself for, you know, and I granted this is government, but doesn't mean it does have to be that expensive. For, I've hired for, to create a video for, three minute video, really professional. And it was nowhere near even a thousand dollars for one video. And I know it takes time. And so I'm just curious, why $12,000? And if we vetted this out, what was the, what was the, you know, how did we vet this out to try to capture? You know, we ended up getting Shipper to be the one that, that took the con, or took the bid. You know, I just, I think that there's probably a better use of those, you know, that money to be able to get someone else at a lot better cost to do the same job.
So we did release a, a bid for solicitation for a period of about a month. We, it was released late November. We sent it out to everyone. We published it on social media. So we did what I felt we needed to do as we've had in before. Anytime we have the need for services, we got just one respondent. The original scope was approximately a seven minute video. And the cost was actually higher. And they resubmitted. We reduced the scope and finally reduced it to about three or so, you know, minute video and at that price. So we did take that into account. And fortunately, we didn't get more, more proposals submitted to us. It was just one single proposal. And, and based on the industry, it just seemed like that's a price for the type of production that we are looking for.
Yeah, I, well, and I appreciate what you're sharing. And I know that, you know, there's, there's, for $12,000, you know, I can get a website created and hosted and ran for probably five years and then, and even have videos to boot, you know. So it's, it just seems like a relatively really high amount. And I personally think it would be good if we can make, so what avenues did you mention that you went through? You said social media?
We did social media, I believe Benito Link, we posted on our websites. So I could get back to you the specifics.
Yeah.
Who we sent it to, pretty much all advertising companies in the county. And several responded saying that at this point, they couldn't submit a proposal, keep them on the list. But we only got one respondent. We started to C map and I don't remember the exact businesses, but I would say everyone in the county was reached.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm just curious, because I, you know, I know Supervisor Dela Cruz had, had an email. Maybe he could elaborate on?
Yeah, yeah, but you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Enrique, I got an email. The gentleman basically asking, there was a, there was a contract with the hospital done a couple of years ago for $20,000. And he personally knows that person that did the job at the hospital. And it, it costs way less than $20,000. And, and for a three minute presentation, this person questions, maybe, maybe San Benito County could have gone out and gotten it at a lower cost than, than the, was it $12,000 that, that's being presented here? And such is what Supervisor Hernandez says. He has experience, real life experience on how much would it cost to do a three minute. I know there's a lot of backup information. I know that. I mean, just when, when the news media makes a 30 seconds presentation, there's maybe two or three hours behind it to get to that point. I get that point. And I get there's a lot of research behind. It's just that, you know, it's $12,000 for a three minute presentation. It just questions it. And you mentioned about advertisement and location. I think in the future that, that you should put down where the advertisements was made, you know. So, so then we, the board can ask the questions. Did you advertise? And he says, yes. And says, okay, we're at. And so you'll show the locations or the places.
That's no problem in the future. I can certainly, we can certainly catch that.
Yeah, maybe even who, Enrique, who, who turned it down. Like, I'd like to know who are these companies that said that they turned down money? Like, but I'm just curious what, how many companies were vetted? And, you know, so I, I support what you're doing. And I think it's a good thing. And I wanted, I want to move, personally move forward with it and support it. It's just 12,000 seems way too much.
I'll follow up with you, just highlighting how we promoted this, this invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to interrupt real quick before we go to Jim and Anthony. But, you know, when we talk about everything up here, the mark, the market dictates the cost. So what I'm worried about was, and you're saying we have, Enrique, is competitive bids. We advertised? We over advertised? And those are the biggest things. The dollars will fall where they fall. If someone came in at 12,000, someone came in at 20,000, another person came in at 25,000, and someone else came in at 30,000, and you selected the 12,000, that's what we have to go with. But we just, I need to make sure I feel comfortable that there was a competitive bidding process. And that's how we, that's, and it sounds like you've done that. So.
Yes, we did request for proposal for video production services. We released it early in November and with a deadline about, you know, a month later. So.
Supervisor Bertella?
Okay. Yeah, I, I just about, you took the words right out of my mouth, what I was concerned about. And I think this is important. We have to have community outreach. That's part of doing the business. 12,000, sounds like a lot of money to me in the overall scheme of your department and what you do and how much you, you know, outreach you need in so many different areas. And it's not affecting our general fund. It's, it's, you know, social service funds. People need to know what's, what's being offered. And the only thing that kind of caught my eye with this, that my colleagues didn't pull it, was we had one request for proposal. So it went through our, our, our system of that's, it's out there for, and for others to submit a proposal. And we got one. And the only, one of the concerns that we've had in the past is that if it's getting out there to a broad enough spectrum of people that could do this type of work. And it's not so much about the money that bothers me. It's just that we got that one proposal back. But I'm fine with it. I may have supported today. And, but that was just something I wanted to make sure our staff was aware as long as we stay as competitive. And sometimes in a small community, that's all you have is one person doing that type of work. Thank you.
Supervisor Gillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, to me, this wasn't about the dollar or the project. I think it's important. I think it's great. My concern more is our purchasing in manner. And maybe not just with this item for the C A O. But, you know, a little more transparency would help. Hey, we sent out the R F P on this date. We had only one respondent, et cetera. And then also, sometimes, as a business owner, sometimes it's difficult to navigate the county website, not just ours, but other county websites. How do you find these? I appreciated that. You said you posted it on social media asking for proposals. And that's, that's key. Let's get it out. Let's be creative and get it out there as much as we can. Because I think as stewards of the tax, taxpayer dollar, whether or not it's general fund or state tax dollars, we, we need to make sure that we're as competitive as possible. And if, if we get it out there to more people, and again, I'm sorry that you're up here, Enrique, because it's not necessarily this. It's just in general, we need to make sure that we blast this out to as many people as possible. So that, you know, maybe a big highlighted thing on the front page of our website that says active, active bids or active proposals, you click on it, it brings everything up, you know, roads and everything. Because as, as we go forward with a lot more projects and road work and all these different things, it's going to be super important to get competitive bids. I appreciate that you did advertise as much as you did. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Two, two thoughts. One is, I was wondering if maybe Gavlin College or San Jose State University, their, their departments could have done this for free or even a couple, you know, barbecue meals. Just, just thinking out loud. And the second question is Supervisor Gillo actually brings up a good point is that maybe, maybe San Benito County needs to go a little bit more global and more visual and, and sell, sell San Benito County. Because all we hear is bad things on Facebook that we don't do anything on social media. Maybe it's about time we, we use those tools for the benefit of the community to provide information. And what are we doing? We got, I mean, we got S P one money. We got sales tax for the highways, for the roads. We got a new jail that we're about to do. We just got a lot of good things that we're pushing forward. And nowhere can, can we sell it other than social media where they start attacking us for whatever reason. Just that's my thought, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Some final thoughts. So I got to open this up, Mr. Chair, the scope of work. And what I'm, you know, so I'm reading, it says planning and management that makes sense, concept development, that's obvious, right? So there's got to be a branding or a message that connects all these fibers that, you know, and I know with Health and Human Services, there's a lot. So I get it. You have to kind of create a singular message that makes sense to the public. And then talk about all the pieces that connect to it. But yeah, what I'm hearing script writing and storyboarding, filming, animated and still footage, that's, that's the, to me, that's just kind of a little inflated. Like, you're going to have to tell a story. I mean, that's, you're going to have to tell a story. And editing up to two rounds and final renders, English voiceover talent. So I guess they're going to spend money outside. And then also equipment costs. So it sounds like they're going to spend money on a lot of equipment. Now it starts to make sense why it's that expensive. But I'm just curious why they have to go to those means. I mean, we're not, we're not making a production movie. We're just doing a three minute video. So it just seems like it's, I don't know. I, to me, it seems like a little inflated. It's really not that complicated. Like I said, I've, I've been, I've hired folks to do videos from my business. And, I mean, people tell me they look really professional. And I haven't spent that kind of money, not even close. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any public comment? See none? Back to the board. What's the wish of the board?
I'll move to approve item 15 as staff recommendation.
I'll second.
We have a second vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Amy?
No.
Aye.
No.
Three to two? Passes. Oh, it does not pass. It's four fifths, wasn't it?
No, no, simple majority.
Yeah.
Oh, the other one was four fifths. I'm sorry.
No, it was the other one.
Yeah.
It was the other one.
Yeah, the simple majority.
Okay, passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Enrique.
Sorry about that, Enrique. I was looking at the other one. Okay, we'll move on to 23. This comes from our Resource Management Agency. And Mr. Gerton, adopt the plans and specifications for the county service areas, number five, number eight, number nine, number 11, and number 35, road maintenance project, public work, or P W P 1903, and authorize the advertisement for bids.
I believe the public pulled this one. So can we ask for the public to come up?
Oh, Jim recused himself. Jim recused himself.
Hey, before I address this, I would like at least to have everybody from the supervisors out here.
I agree.
I'm waiting for the bathroom, sir. I'm going to recuse on this side. He's in the Yes, ma'am. I'll step aside because it's consent. Is that correct? I did, I said it at a home, I believe a thousand feet, yeah. Chair, I do, when it's called for consent, I need to recuse myself.
Yes, yes. Yes, winners.
Supervisor Gillo had to recuse himself because of the Ridge Mark.
Yeah, I understand that, but we still.
I may be able to be out here in a second, sir.
I could understand that. Hey, Richard Ferrera, 1131 Union Heights Drive. I'm representative of property owners at CSA 35. It's been two months since we settled the deal with the agreement on CSA 35 and legitimized everything. After that happened, within 24 hours, I was contacted by the C A O, reached out, asked for a meeting. Within a week, we had a meeting with the C A O, his staff, and Supervisor Bertella. It was a very good meeting. I was very, much optimism about it. Went well. They listened to all our things, what to do. It, we even gave them some documentation that we had. It did. C A O said that he would turn it over to the R M A to get a response to it. Couple weeks later, I met with Deputy C A O in Alaska. And the delay was partly my fault because I was unavailable or we would have met sooner. We went out onto the project for researching, spent two and a half hours out there. I thought it was very beneficial. He understood what we were going and understood what, what was going on. Which brings us to item 23, adopt plans and specification for the county service area road maintenance. I've been 40 years in the, as a developer and a contractor. And when the client, before the contractor approves plans, the client usually reviews it. In the two months it's gone by, have never been, the, the R M A or the staff of management or staff hasn't reached out to talk to us. As far as I know, they haven't been out of the project. They need to talk to us before it's, what, what are these plans are? What are these specifications? We've had 10 years of non-use on those things. And then we've got a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of damages occurred because of the non-use for 10 years. And we were in agreement with the C A O. And like I said, it was a great meeting. Everybody thinks we're going to try to work together, get this thing resolved, get back to where, get the scope of work out and get back to where we were before this problem occurred. But yet, the R M A doesn't reach out to us, going on on their own. What are these plans? What are these specifications? Nobody's seen, I haven't reviewed them. I don't know what they are. They might be incomplete, might not address what our problems are. And I would like that to be addressed before anything is approved. We have to review it also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Bring it back to the board. Any questions from the board?
I guess, Mr. Chairman, is it that difficult of a, of a program to have the CSAs take a look at the specs and the plans? You know, just with, for the sake of, you know, better communication, maybe, maybe that's not a unreasonable request. It's their money that we're spending. And, you know, and if there's any other additional input, or maybe it's not unreasonable.
I, I don't think it's unreasonable. Obviously, this is out of the R M A office. I do know that we met with, with him. And this is something that we can work on internally. I know we're working on this as well with other CSAs to keep up communications. And I don't know if the R M A wants to, to talk about this item or not.
I have, I have two opinions here. You know, of course, the Union Heights representative is a longtime contractor, understands roads, understands surface and all this stuff. But when you're looking at all the other CSAs, not all of them have that expertise. So we're depending upon our county staff for that expertise. So when we start something like this, we need to make sure that when we communicate, we need communications to our CSAs, but not all of them are going to have that same input as Mr. Ferrera there. So that's the only thing that I would add.
Yeah. And I'm looking at it from a high level, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, from a financial point of view, because that's one of the things that most CSAs are concerned with, is to make sure that they can accomplish fixing lighting, or coverts, or other, you know, road-type items. But there's also, you know, a fiscal responsibility for them to make sure that those things are getting done, and we just wanna, what I'm saying is that from staff's perspective, we want to make sure that they're informed.
Yes.
From the budgetary point of view, and I think it's important that the RMA make sure that they understand what's happening, and these action items that do occur, what that, what that impacts it has on the budget.
You stated that perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think your point is well-taken.
You've already spoken, sir.
The CAO raised a question, and I'd like to have a rebuttal to it, because I think it's...
Give you a...
In request...
Give you the minute.
Okay. He requests about the budget items. Now, this isn't a normal deal. Because of the delay and ten years of non-use or non-service to these roads, they've incurred damages far and above what would normally have been taken care of under the budget. Now, when we met before, it was, we made it very plain that anything over and above damages, that we expect the county to cover that. And we hope to work it out, and we don't, hope to be able to address it like that. And, and it isn't, I know the rest of the property owners, you know what it'd be just like? If you don't paint your house, and then you get dry rot, and then you try to paint over it, it's not gonna happen. The damage, you're gonna have to repair it. But if you paint it on every five years, you don't have to incur that.
Yes, sir.
This is what happened here, and that's, this budget isn't going to cover some of these things that's happened because of the disrespect.
Thank you. Supervisor Batello?
Yeah, I was beginning to say that, you know, obviously, we wanna try to bid this stuff out, get the work done, and, you know, yes, having the CSAs review the plans and maybe taking it to their own engineers and seeing, it does get convoluted. I, I'll grant you that. And, you know, I do hope we go ahead and move forward with this today. I think we have to, but maybe in the future, as, if we have more time and we improve our dialogue with CSAs, with our CSA director, we avoid these issues and problems.
We can always, and correct me if I'm wrong here, can we approve all of them with the exception of Union Heights and having them talk this through?
I, I think we have to move forward with them all.
Okay, that's, just bringing that up for you. Any other comments from Supervisor Hernandez or Supervisor Dela Cruz?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, you know, I know, just looking at, what I'm seeing is, I know El Toro Drive and Bonneview Road, they are on the list here. Can you step up real quick, Mr. Gerton, Looking at the plans for El Toro and Bonneview, is that just, is that a total resurface? I mean, I read through the packet, but I was kind of...
Greg Bucknell's here.
Okay.
From engineering. Do you know, Greg?
Slurry, okay. Okay, slurry fill. Perfect. Well, I appreciate the El Toro and Bonneview. Let's say this motion passes today. What's the timeframe of when things would actually happen? May?
May.
No, July? May, June?
Well, depends on how long the winter goes. The rain could delay us if it goes into April.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gerton? Bring it back to the board. What's the wish of the board?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that, hold on, Mr. Chair, I'm screaming crazy. I make a motion that we adopt the plans and specifications for the CSAs five-eight-nine-eleven and thirty-five road maintenance project, PWB dash nineteen oh three, and authorize the advertisement for bids, and authorize, again, and authorize the advertisement for bid. I'm sorry I said that double.
Mr. Circuit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero.
Thank you, John. Mine's the next one also, so I'll stay.
This brings up number twenty-four, also from the Resource Management Agency, a proven reverse agreement with Bristol SB LLC.
Can you bring Mr. Gillio in, too?
And we worked on that agreement as well, so I can answer any questions regarding it.
This came, this comes from me also, is, the question I have here is, it's more of informational, is when they put the money into the, let's just call it that, the bank, I think it was a twenty thousand dollar deposit, how do we draw down from that, and how do we know that your time, because I believe it's, we contract out, and I believe we charge our own staff time, if that's correct?
Yes, sir.
So how do we, how do we know that we're charging that, those dollars, and we're receiving funds? That's what I'm worried about, you know, you know me.
Right. So the funds are received by our department, and that's put in as revenue, and then held in an account. And then, as people work on the project, each project is given a project code in the system, and so as planners work on the project, they code their time to that project. And then Scott Lines, my administrative services manager, he and his staff know when they process payroll then to charge to that revenue account.
Is it too much to ask to actually, in the packet next time, just include that worksheet?
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you. Supervisor Gillio, any que, oh, another question. Sorry, John, is this development here, or this proposed racetrack, there is no homes on it, correct? It's just the possible venue itself, along with possible hotels? Is that?
I think that they're just trying to move forward with the racetrack itself at this point in time.
So, let's not call it a racetrack.
Not, sorry, not racetrack.
Autom...
Truck, automobile.
Autonomous vehicle.
Autonomous vehicle.
Answer the question. That would probably help. Yeah, so it's a research and development facility for autonomous vehicles, so it's a commercial development. And right now, that's, those are the items that we need to discuss going forward. Right now, the proposal is just for facilities for research and development. They may want to explore hotels or workforce housing as an option, but that hasn't been on the...
But in the EIR right now, in the SEQA, the only thing they're looking for is research and development. There's nothing they're trying to look at with residential.
I don't know. I haven't seen it yet. There, like I said, there could be potential for workforce housing specific for the site, so that, to try to mitigate traffic impacts.
My understanding is that they're gonna submit just for the testing grounds, but no, I don't believe that they're gonna be submitting for housing at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, I may?
Yes, sir.
I actually did call John Patterson yesterday, because this was brought up. I believe Supervisor Gillio had questioned this, so I wanted to call to confirm if there was gonna be any development or housing associated with this. He assured me that it's not, and it's, what he's looking at is strictly hospitality for those that are, that are actually coming in, that needs a place to stay from either Detroit, or Europe, or Japan, or somewhere else, like in those areas, so they can do their work there. So he assured me. One of the things that he mentioned is that you really can't have a housing project next to a development, automotive development, because there's screeching tires, there's, there's a lot of activity going on, and it doesn't, it's not conducive to, to the program that they're looking at. So he assured me that.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Supervisor Gillio?
Yeah, I had the exact same question. I thank you for clarifying that. The, this, I support this project wholeheartedly for the commercial aspect of it, and I want to make sure that it doesn't morph into a giant residential project, because that had been proposed in that same location in the past. And I appreciate to have that on the record and clarity that we're moving forward with this great economic opportunity, and I think it's gonna really invigorate our economic engine here in the county. Thank you for clarifying that. Supervisor, if I could, I'd just let you know, if, if that were to change, where it became a residential development, then that would require a new application. We wouldn't process it. But yeah, if you hear that, please let us know.
Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Batello?
Yeah, this area is in my district, and I'm pretty enthusiastic from what I, the generalities of the, of the project. I think it's compatible out there. You know, I do, would have a deep concern about residential housing out there. You know, I could understand some workforce needs, you know, being in agriculture myself, we have workforce housing issues. But above and beyond that, I would have serious concerns. Hospitality makes sense. You know, this is, be a world-class, you know, opportunity for, you know, the whole region and San Bernito County. So I, I'm happy to see this finally moving forward, and hopefully we have a good agreement here and make some progress. Thank you.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yeah, I'm just, two things. First, I echo the same position of my fellow supervisors. It can't be residential out there. We have enough experience of it out there. And the other one is more of a, I'm gonna play kind of devil's advocate here, and I'm reading actually one-point-two section, records and accounting. I know that in the past, we had some big, major projects in which, not the county per se, but consultants that were working the behalf of the county were actually charging a lot of money to developers. It's not our general fund money, but at the same time, we need to be fair about it. And I see that there's a way in which the applicant can actually say, "Look, I'd like to make sure that the funds are spent in the right way, the correct way, and making sure that it's not being overcharged." And so I'm happy that one-point-two is here. It's in the best interest of the applicant in this case, and, you know, but my concern is protecting the general fund, protecting the dollars, taxpayers' dollars, but at the same time, we should not take advantage of anybody and treat everybody fair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Hernandez?
So I appreciate the will of the board. I can sense that, obviously, there's a consensus about making sure there's no residential developments in that location. I wanted to echo a little bit of what Supervisor Gillio kind of mentioned, that, you know, ultimately, that this project, the whole goal is, at least from what I can foresee with the will of the board, is to have it to be a good economic engine to our county, you know, through the commercial side. The hard part about this current conversation is it doesn't guarantee that this, these same individuals with the same sentiment are gonna be here when this project comes to fruition. So as things change, you know, there, that's where the questions arise. We want to make sure that there still is that, that focus. And to me personally, honestly, Mr. Chair, the more I think about it, if we could diversify it to where the, you know, obviously, their, their model is gonna be to the best benefit of their business. To that same extent, I think we need to consider how, you know, they can present the best benefit to our county. And I like what I'm hearing with, with the hospitality and, you know, the tourism benefit, or the TOT dollars and stuff. So there's a lot of things that we can capture, I think, and that's why even that element of the housing, you know, I don't want to get too much into their business, but I'd like to know what they're intending, you know, are they gonna stay here for a week at a time to work out here, or just a couple days? That can kind of really help us gauge ultimately where their focus is and on our end, seeing how we can maybe even accommodate that with, with hospitality. So it's just having a better understanding of what, how that's gonna play out. And I know that, I appreciate what our director has mentioned, that they'd have to do a whole nother application if things changed, but it still should, at least in my mind, we still should have a good understanding of the outcome when this thing finally happens.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
What's the will of the board?
Twenty public...
I'm sorry, public comment? Thank you, Jaime. He gave me the dirty look, so I knew.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Supervisors, Robo Neta with RJA here for the Florianis and Bristol. Just wanted to add one thing to the discussion, and that is that the Florianis want to make it clear that they do want to maintain their homestead ranch on this property. It's very important to the family and very important to the legacy. So when we discuss residential, they do want to keep that, but it will be located appropriately and certainly won't be impacted by future users.
Can, can I ask, just clarify one thing, is I did make a statement calling it a racetrack, which I know it's not. Can you kind of explain what the research and development process...
Yeah, autonomous vehicle, research, testing facility, major facilities, their, their primary purpose is for testing, research, and development for those, and there's many different uses that would be out there, different businesses that would be doing this and utilizing facilities on-site. It's very, they, they need to be very secure and very private, and certain facilities do for, you know, obvious, you know, reasons. But another reason for not having residential on the site, that's, wouldn't be compatible, nor would, as was mentioned, the noise from that. But together with that would also be, as was mentioned, potentially a hospitality facilities, you know, and an experience center, customer experience center, you know, as you've maybe seen, you know, Audi, Porsche, and others do that. But it's in the formative stages right now, and the users are all common, have common uses, but are very different, and their needs are very different. So when we do bring something forward with you with a little more clarity on that, that'll be helpful. Right now, there's, there's a non-disclosure agreement, so we can reveal a lot, but that is the primary use of the facility, you know, for, for those types of uses.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
Thank you.
Bring it back to the board. Any questions from the board? What's the will of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. That concludes the consent agenda. We'll go on to the regular session. Would you like to take a quick five-minute recess?
Yes. Without even asking this time.
I don't want to take a break!
I don't wanna take a break.
Working on, some of us very directly and in general that we think are important for this community and for the people we represent, and we ask the Board of Supervisors to support these bills and actions. We know you can't take action right now. It's not something we got to you far enough in advance to do that, but we, you know, would request that you consider them as soon as you can. So, I don't want to read all the bills that are here specifically, but I do want to hit a couple highlights and talk about some of the philosophy behind this. We're approaching legislation in two manners. One is the obvious one, bills that are being written, and we're talking about state bills that will affect our population. And second to that is budgetary issues that affect, again, the same population. So there's a few key things that we're tracking or have sponsored directly ourselves that I want to share. You can read them yourself, but I do want to talk about a couple of examples. And the first one on here is a statewide budget augmentation for seventeen and a half million for senior nutrition programs. And this really means senior dining centers and meals on wheels. In our area, we are at our nineteen eighty-four, eighty-five levels for senior nutrition programs, which puts us in an impossible situation to even begin to meet the need of our community. I think most of you know that older adults are the fastest growing population in California. Statewide, the under sixty population is essentially stable. There is no growth that's happening there. Regionally, it's different, but across the state, the senior population has grown about twenty percent over the last six or seven years and is expected to continue to grow at that rate. So, to try to fund this growing population's needs with a funding level that is the same as it was thirty-five years ago is an impossible task. So, we're really trying to get the state to make a contribution to that population. And part of these programs is they were initially designed that between eighty-five and ninety percent of the funding would come from the state and federal government. Right now, statewide, thirty-six percent is coming from those funding sources. And all of you are, deserve to be thanked, and the community as well, because the difference is being made up by local jurisdiction funding and by community donations and by foundations. So, it's really time for the state to flip that percentage a bit and start supporting these key programs. There's similar asks for other programs on here. One that I do need to mention is the MSSP increase. MSSP is the Multi-Service Senior Program, which is why we say MSSP, because that's a math book. MSSP is only eligible, or only available to individuals that are designated eligible to be in nursing homes and be Medi-Cal eligible, Medicaid eligible. So, they have to be two things. They have to be, you know, frail and elderly and ready to be institutionalized and poor. If somebody qualifies for that, they can, if there's slots available, receive home-based and community-based services that are reimbursed at a fraction of the cost of living in a skilled nursing facility. So, anyone on MSSP is saving the state tens of thousands of dollars each year. So, it's a program that's revenue positive. It has also been capped in terms of reimbursement rates and number of slots available for about twenty years now, and that needs an increase. And the reason I highlight this is that there is no MSSP program in San Benito County, which makes no sense to me. If it's something that the state makes money on, why can't our nursing home eligible individuals in this county receive those benefits? So, I would actually encourage this board to put pressure on the state to expand that program to be more rural, community-friendly. And we have a program in Salinas, we have a program in Santa Cruz, so it's not like we're trying to bring something in from overseas. There's a similar, you know, similar programs operating in our region already, so it's not too big of a reach to get one started here. The other budget augmentations you can read on your own, I don't want to keep you here all day, so I think I'll jump to legislation. Again, a number of bills listed, but there's new enthusiasm and optimism in the state in that we have a governor now who has pledged paying attention to older adults and, more importantly, creating a master plan on aging, something that's been talked about for many, many years. Our governor has pledged to do that, and there are two bills introduced, one in the Assembly and one in the Senate, designed to do exactly that, to start creating this master plan on aging. And some of these other bills play into that. You'll see on there, eleven thirty-six, AB eleven thirty-six, is to create a California Department of Community Living, where we look at community need, where we notice where things, where people with disabilities and people who are older, often the same services will help both populations. So, this is an attempt to bring those sorts of services together under one roof where programs can complement each other and break down some of the silos that we're all familiar with in all the government programs that we run, you know, making sure those funding sources can talk to each other. And the next bill on this, eleven thirty-seven, and I mentioned these two because I'm part of a team of about five people that's writing these and working with Assemblymen and Azarians to move them forward, is to modernize the Older Californians Act, which was an attempt to address the aging population twenty-five years ago. It's a great act. It had all its funding removed a decade ago, so it's time to look at what parts of that really were effective and try to bring it back as part of this comprehensive master plan on aging. So, these bills kind of feed into one another, and that's why this list is our top priority. As you go down the other list and look at some of the others, you'll see, you know, there's one about senior housing. There's just a variety of things that fit into that master plan. So, today, you know, I'm really here to highlight those things. There's a lot of different work that we do besides looking at legislature. One of the best things that we do, I think, is just meet and find out what each of our local agencies are doing and what the need and challenges are that we each face, so we can do our own cooperative plan in trying to move things forward and make sure we're not duplicating each other's services or maybe filling some gaps, you know, that we identify. As a group, we can often figure out solutions better than we can as individual agencies. We will come back in the near future. I put in here a couple of things that we're working on. One is that CalFresh food stamps will soon be provided to people who are on SSI. California was the last state to do that, and starting on June first, SSI recipients will be eligible to receive food stamps. So, a number of us are already working on that project, and we're excited about rolling that out. The county, of course, will pay, play a key role locally in that, but local agencies will partner in getting the word out. And then, lastly, this is the Tickler File, is that our agency is trying to work on the development of age-friendly cities, which is an effort of the World Health Organization. So, we'll be partnering with local cities and the county to try to create an age-friendly county, a couple of age-friendly cities. And one of the things we're most excited about that is all the tools are available to be provided. We don't have to invent them ourselves, and it's a great way to highlight to the community all the great things that the county or local cities are already doing to make their community more age-friendly. It doesn't have to be new, expensive projects. It can be, let's look at all the projects that exist here that we can count as part of our age-friendly efforts and share that with the community at large and see if we can develop additional partnerships to move that forward. So, that's what I'm here. Hopefully, you can consider these bills and budget action. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I'm also happy to step away if there are any.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Hernandez?
So, what is an age-friendly community? An age-friendly community is a community that tries to create a lifestyle that's conducive to individuals aging in place rather than aging in nursing homes, for example, or rather than having to move out. So, it looks at eight domains of, they call it eight domains of livability, which are, do you have public transit? Do you have available housing? How much does housing cost? Are there parks and open space? Are there lifelong educational opportunities? I can't remember all eight categories. I should, but I can't roll them off my tongue. One thing that's been discovered in that is that millennials and older adults, if you ask them what makes a community friendly or livable to them, they pick the exact same things. So, the movement is actually to call it a livable community more than an age-friendly community, but that's the basic concept, is that you have these different domains. You can pick different domains, but AARP and World Health Organization have identified eight domains to consider, eight areas, and they will gather the data to show how your community is doing. They have a master database. If you go to the AARP website, you can look up that tool, and you can measure how livable or age-friendly your community is on your street, in your city, in your county, or in a smaller or larger area. So, the data and number crunching is already done. Now, looking, I've peeked and looked at Hollister, where we do poorly are any place in California does poorly in housing, because we all know the housing crunch we have. There aren't spaces available, there aren't, you know, the cost of housing is much more expensive than elsewhere in the country. But, the goal is to make sure we're doing efforts to address those types of challenges. So, you know, I mean, that's a brief overview, probably not a really thorough one and good one, but we could get somebody here from AARP to come and present or to do that as a subcommittee of this group and talk about it more intimately about what that can, what that consists of.
Thank you. Professor Dela Cruz?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Dulce is going to love this. Just make sure you register for the census and you spread the word out. It's very important.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Gilia?
I just want to say thank you for the report, and this is a, sorry, my mic's off. This is a critical area that we need to study and really take action on, because our aged population are more and more are becoming homeless, more and more are unable to find housing, and it's not necessarily that they don't have the basic income level. They do have the basic income level, several of them. We just can't find them housing. So, one of the projects that I was proud of when we were at the city was the Project Online Street that is now accepting applications for our seniors. So, I kind of wanted to mention that and bring that up. I believe the application closing date is coming soon for that. So, if you are a senior out there and you're looking for housing, there is something available now for you to apply for. And then, I believe, I'm not sure exactly where we are in the process, but this board and through their leadership in the past was dealing with the San Juan Oaks project, and it's an age-restricted community, fifty-five and over. So, there are some things that San Benito County is looking at doing to cater to our aging community as well, and I really appreciate your efforts on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, the applications are due today by five o'clock for the senior apartment pre-applications.
Fifty-two, right?
Maybe our friends at the press will get that out as well again.
Yeah, put it on Facebook. The word's getting out about that. I get, I don't know, three or four notices a week about the opening, which is really nice to see.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, sir. It was just a presentation. No vote is needed. This brings us to our number thirty, the, coming from the Agriculture Commissioner.
Good morning. We're here today to adopt by resolution the process and procedures for accepting, reviewing, and issuing a cannabis business permit. We have designated an initial period, etc. The initial application period will begin on April first and be open until May thirty-first, four P.M. All applications must be submitted to the Agriculture Commissioner's office at thirty-two twenty-four South Side Road by four P.M. on May thirty-first. The applications will be available at our office or online. They can be downloaded there as well. We've broken the application process into like four phases. There's first the initial phase where we receive a completed application. We're asking for two hard copies and a third copy on a flash drive. We're asking them to pay the ten thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deposit, and this is a deposit in which all our charges will be costed against. If it is more complex or we need more money along the way, we will ask for more money, and then we will resume the process once that has been paid. If an application is denied or is not as complex and it's, there's a balance left over, then we will refund that balance. In the first part, they're going to have to also get a zoning verification letter. This is just a real basic one to make sure that they're even in the proper zone in which they can conduct the cannabis business. They also have to go through a background check that the Sheriff's Department will conduct. When we move into phase two is when we start looking at the applications in a little more detail. At this time, because this has kind of been an ongoing process for a couple of years, we kind of anticipate a fairly large number of applications. We are going to use the services of HDL to do that initial review for us. I'm still looking. Right, wait, 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 wait. Let me go there. I think it's just not coming up. Phase two, we're going to look at the location, security plan, neighborhood compatibility, business plan, and safety plan. HDL will then score them and rank them on criteria. Anyone that passes within eighty percent or better will move on to phase three. Phase three is kind of like a job applicant. You know, they look really good on paper, but now we want to meet them. We're going to schedule appointments, interview those, go into more detail. This will be done with a committee, depending on the type of business license. It may, it will probably always include the sheriff, fire, possibly environmental health or public health, depending on the type of facility that it is, myself, and it can vary from one, but we're going to interview each of these applicants. And again, we're going to score them based on, in this case, ownership, community benefit, you know, what are they bringing to the community, employment, incentives, enhanced product safety, security plan, safety plan, business plan. We want to make sure that they can conduct the business and sustain it, and they have their capitalized labor, employment, the benefits that they're offering. In our ordinance, we're requiring them to pay a hundred and fifty percent of minimum wage or better, environmental mitigation, neighborhood compatibility, and then the qualifications of the owners. Once this phase is completed, and those moving forward on that will go into phase four, which is then a public meeting. All residents within a thousand feet of the proposed site will be invited for a public meeting to voice their concerns or support. All this information then will be taken into consideration. We may have to go back, ask more questions, review the sites, and then eventually make a recommendation to our CAO on which businesses that we think should be permitted for a cannabis business permit. If you'd like more detail on the specifics of what the criteria we're looking at, David is here from HDL and would be, can go into more depth on the items that we're going to look at in order to rank these businesses.
Any questions from the board members? Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, just one question. From beginning to end, you know, it's an average application, nothing too, you know, this is complex, you know, to, as a review process. How long you think it will take our departments to process and make a decision?
Part of it will depend on how many we get. You know, we're going to limit cultivation to fifty licenses. We may not get that. We're going to have the application period open for basically April and May. Then, we're going to give the entire applications to HDL to go through. I think we anticipate at least a month, maybe even two months to get through them all. We're not really doing it on a first-come, first-served, because we want to rank them among themselves in the event that we have more than fifties, that we, you know, we only move forward the best. And then, we're going to have to then schedule interviews with the committee to meet with each of those. I would say September, October, maybe we would be able to start issuing the permits.
So, we're not going to be looking at any cannabis being grown this, this year?
Well, probably not. And I also have to say, in addition to this, and they could do it concurrently, but they're also going to have to get a conditional use permit for that site. And I don't know the timeframe for that. That would be a question for RMA.
Yeah, that's a little concerning for me.
I think, you know, over time, if we, we don't get fifty applicants, then we would open up an application process again. And I think it would actually move probably quicker over time if we're only dealing with one or two as they come in to move them through. Our goal is that we feel like we need the assistance of HDL this first go-around, because we really don't have staff yet to implement this program or know what we're getting into. But eventually, this is something we want to take on ourselves, and I think it would be less impact on the various departments if they kind of come in one at a time as opposed to handing fifty of them.
Yeah, and I would assume that we wouldn't have it in April. It'd probably be like January to January thirty-first, something a little earlier in the year, I would assume.
Well, or, like I said, or an open process. We would just receive them and work on them and move them forward without a set period of time.
Right. Well, I kind of hope that we could continue to work. I'm very supportive of the four-phase process. I think that vetting is really important, but then I also kind of hope that we could kind of, on our end, kind of move up that timeline a little bit better. That's a comment I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Gilia?
I just want to say thank you for coming up with a very detailed process and HDL. I think that it's critical to be transparent on what, what to expect in the application process from, number one, for our community standpoint, so they can understand what's happening with marijuana, or I guess you call cannabis. There's a lot going on with that, so I think it's clear there. It's clear for the applicants, and it's clear for the board on what we can expect, that you, how you're going to vet people. I also like that there's little subjective ability in here, because there's, you know, location, three-hundred points, business plan, four-hundred points, you know, it's scored. And I would just encourage whoever's going to be working on these scoring processes to try to keep subjectiveness out of it and look at the facts, because that's where subjective gets us into issues. The only thing, the other thing I would encourage is, is to reach out to your peers in the industry that have experience with this stuff, and in particular at the city, we have a neighbor here that has been dealing with this for a little while. And frankly, we got off to a rocky start in the city and had to kind of restart, so maybe we can look at some lessons learned from that perhaps. Thank you.
Supervisor Hernandez?
So, my question, Karen, is do, is that ten thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty, I get it's a deposit, so why, why did you pick ten thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty?
Well, I think we went through that process when we came up with it, but there, you know, we anticipate, say, the background check. There's a life scan fee for doing the fingerprinting, and then three hours on the average for the sheriff to do the background check. The zoning verification RMA is going to look at the zoning to make sure it's compatible with the use of verification. HDL is going to charge us a, kind of a flat rate to go through the various applications. And then, we have, you know, the committee is going to take a lot of time going through and interviewing everybody and then issuing it. So, it's based on kind of an outline of the number of hours we're estimating and the cost. Like I say, some may take more, some may take less, but we will, we will still cover all of our costs this way.
And the only reason why I ask is because I'm curious like how, you know, we, as time goes on and, you know, we go, years pass and, you know, there's, we're using staff, then we're, there's, you know, as they get colas and, you know, they're, obviously their wages increase and stuff, our cost is going to increase, but it just seems like such a hard figure. And I get it's a deposit.
Yeah, it's not a hard figure. It's an initial deposit. Here's ten thousand dollars. Start working on my application. If our costs go up, we're still going to charge those against this. We may run out of money, and at that point, we say we can't resume work on your application until we receive three thousand dollars more, or whatever it takes.
Yeah. I'm just curious if it's, it's included, the possibility of increases in our cost.
Right, it will, because it'll always be charging our actual costs. And, and we went with the deposit, because there's no way for us to really predict a hard fee for this. And then, like you say, you would have to come back each year or every other year to update that. So, this, this will stay current, because we will just have to require them to deposit more money, maybe somewhere along the way.
So, this will be this year, and then maybe next year it'll come back to us and say that deposit needs to change, possibly?
If, you know, just, just the way I'm looking at this is, if we do the analytical look at something and at the end of the year, the average is twenty thousand dollars, we would come back to the board, and we would, of course, by ordinance, ask to approve a twenty thousand dollar deposit versus the ten thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty we have now.
We also may.
Am I correcting that? Mr. Espinoza?
Yeah, we could do that, but again, I know staff and administration have been looking at this, and again, it's kind of a crystal ball right now, but we'll have some more data, and then we can, we can address that later.
Supervisor Dela Cruz?
None, Ms. Chair.
The only question I have is, when this is approved, or if this is approved, the website will be up on April first? I saw your link, and it's under construction. I know until...
Yeah, but there are links to the ordinances, the fee schedule, or the tax schedule and different ones. But yes, the, the actual forms and this application process will be up there before April first.
Perfect.
Good.
Do we have any public comment? Can you fill out a yellow sheet, please? Thank you, sir. You can do it right after, please. We just won't let you leave.
Okay, good. Kind of like the Hotel California. So, my name is Jim Keener, and it sounds like the ten thousand, six-hundred kind of separates the men from the boys anyway a little bit. You know, you're going to get people that are going to go, well, ten thousand, six-hundred. So, that seems fair to me. I looked at it. I always say, keep taxes low as you can. I thought it said two and a half percent on a micro business, but it says three and a half percent in, or four percent, and you want to lower it to three and a half? Is that what I see coming up?
We can only, correct me if I'm wrong, we can only go to three and a half percent, because, yeah, we amended, we did an amendment, because we accidentally approved a four percent, and the state doesn't allow four percent. It's three point five.
Oh, okay.
Limit, Jim.
It was a tax, the tax measure.
Yeah. Did I see two and a half percent, or is it, did I just see the wrong, two and a half percent on a micro business? Was, was that ever proposed?
Maybe originally, before you bumped it?
But, okay, two and a half percent was recommended by staff, okay. And I do appreciate all the work you guys are going to do. I know this has, this has been a lot of work. I did call the Sheriff's Department to get a life scan done, and they said they don't do it, and they recommended to me to the, I guess, the city schools or something. And I, I think they were supposed to get funding to do life scans at one meeting that I heard of, but they say they don't do them yet. And I want to get... But they say they don't do them yet. And I want to get ahead again. I want to get a jump on it and get stuff going.
I mean, so that's what this process is about. We're, we're setting and establishing the process. Again, when you go back and you look at these items, there's one, two, three, four kind of items. The sheriff's organization will be handling that. But as of right now, they don't do any of those outside things and the schools do handle those things. But once this thing gets established and moved forward, we'll be working with them. And that's part of the, the fees, what those fees encumber is for their time and their work on this.
Okay, so I should wait to get a life scan done when the sheriffs are doing it for this permit? For the cannabis permit, I should wait?
Yeah, and I, you know, that's the last that I know. Karen, is there anything, any updates with the sheriff?
When I talked to the sheriff, he said that the life scans themselves can be done at other locations because they get a certain number that they apply to look at them. But what you'd want to do is also bring the, you know, a copy receipt that you paid for that because we don't want to charge you for that a second time.
Yeah. I think that's all the questions I had. I just appreciate all your work. I know it's been a lot of work. I can't imagine. But thank you very much. I appreciate all your help.
Thank you, sir. Bring it, any other comments from the public? Bring it back to the board. Any questions from the board? What's the order of the board?
Make a motion, approve a resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty seven. Twenty seven, right?
Second, Mr. Chair?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five, zero. Go on to our number thirty-one, the Resource Management Agency. Receive a report on potential projects for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty. The otherwise known as SB one program and give direction to staff.
Mr. John Gurn? With your indulgence, can I ask a request to the board?
Yes, sir.
There was a member of the community who approached me at the break and he perhaps should have maybe spoken during public comment, but he has a comment that he'd like to make about Senega Road. And he was wondering if he could do that now, maybe perhaps before the presentation, if it's okay with the board.
I would grant that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I take those cards seriously, okay?
Good morning. My name is Al Cortez and I live in Hidden Valley. And I've lived in San Benito County since about nineteen eighty-eight. I was a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee that worked with the state park and the county during the growth of Hollister Hills. That committee was responsible for giving input to the state and to the county for all of the issues that needed to be mitigated as the park expanded and grew. One of the issues that we spent a lot of time on was the road impacts to Senega Road and all the approaches to the park and how the park's growth was going to impact the people that lived on Senega Road and lived on any of the areas that were approached the park. We spent a lot of time on that. As we came to the conclusion of the EIR process, I had a meeting with the supervisor, the late supervisor Ron Rodriguez, and he informed me that at the time, this is about nineteen ninety-nine, that the resolution to the funding for Senega Road with the state had, was going to be a seven thousand dollar a year. You know, the state was going to give seven thousand dollars a year to the county. Plus, there was also going to be a, a tax on the quarry that was up Senega Road. Well, unfortunately, that tax never came, never came about because of some legal issues. And we, excuse me, and so, you know, that was the, that was the agreement that I left with in nineteen ninety-nine. As years progressed and the, and the committee, I, as a member of the committee, would ask, you know, what's happening with the money for Senega Road? I never did get a good answer until recently when I found out that the arrangement between the county and the park had been renegotiated. And now there was an amount of a hundred thousand dollars per year. Unfortunately, depending how you look at it, unfortunately, that money went into the general fund. As I read the MOU, the money that was coming from the state was for impacts to Senega Road and other impacts, but the majority of it was supposed to go to Senega Road. So my question to the board is, how much money has been collected and where is it at? And what is the plan for following the MOU?
I can, boy, I'm sorry.
Is it possible to put this on the agenda for April second or the seventeenth with Supervisor Gilio's approval?
Yeah, I was going to comment on that. We, we had, we had been discussing it. It was going to be on the agenda today, but unfortunately it's, or fortunately, it's Farm Day. And many of the residents in Senega Valley are at Farm Day, so they want, they asked this to be moved to April second. Or actually, I suggested April second and they agreed with it. So we're going to have a discussion, I believe, on April second. And it's spelled out pretty clearly. Stuart, who's not in the room right now, did a ton of research. I've met with state parks, talked to the Sacramento office as well as the superintendent. And I think on April second, we'll have a pretty clear understanding of where we're headed and a plan forward.
Okay. I just would like to ask the county again to look at the MOU. And that was the agreement that we left with way back when, but we've never seemed to had any follow-through with that.
Got it. April second, I think it'll all become clear. And if you'd like, you can call me before then and I can share the information I have between now and then.
Thank you.
Thank you for that efficiency there. I asked for April second and wow, is that already done? This brings us to number thirty-one, the Resource Management Agency. We'll be speaking about SB one.
Okay, good morning again. So I guess first I need to apologize because I guess I wasn't clear with Supervisor Gilio about John Smith Road. Couple of board meetings ago when you all had asked us to bring this as a discussion topic, I'd said that we'd bring this as part of the SB one packet and that it was going to take some time for staff to get reacquainted with this project, being that nobody on my staff has been here while this project was a project for John Smith. So it's been a bit of a scramble for staff to keep up with their regular workload, but then also get up to speed on this project and get some estimates together. In fact, as, all the way up until last night, when I was heading off to Supervisor Gilio's community meeting, they were still finalizing the numbers. So it's still a work in progress, but I think we have some numbers that we can all have a, have a, have a good conversation about. But just to start off.
John, in the future, can we have the backup for this stuff? I mean, I know there could have been some type of backup for SB one or something like that.
Nothing here.
There's nothing here. It just says verbal. It says, I receive a verbal report from staff on status of SB one funding. It says nothing about John Smith. And I know the lady that was here earlier, she, I believe she left.
She's gone, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's just, you know, when we're looking at this, I saw this as just SB one funding.
Right, yeah. No, I fully understand. So where we are with the SB one project to date so far, you'll recall in October of two thousand seventeen, your board approved the projects there on the bottom for the seventeen, eighteen year program. Those projects are all either currently underway or are completed at this point. So we're, we're glad to report that. Remember, that was a portion of a fiscal year as the tax got underway. So that's why it was the seven hundred thousand dollars rather than the, the full one point seven million dollars. The eighteen, nineteen, those are the projects that your board approved last April, in April of two thousand and eighteen. Those have, I think those have all come to you, or preparing those to come to you for plans and specs to be approved so that we can get those done this fiscal year. So as far as we want to talk about John Smith Road, John Smith Road, if you want to go forward with working on that now and not doing the realignment, I think we have some opportunity for moving some projects, if the board so chooses, off of the eighteen, nineteen and actually getting some work done on John Smith Road this, this calendar year. So going back to John Smith Road, the project was originally conceived of years ago for realigning John Smith Road to make a better and safer intersection at John Smith and Fairview so that the public using that road, but also the, the garbage trucks going to John Smith landfill have a turn pocket and have an intersection that tees up properly with proper site, line of sight issues and, and it's just safer for everyone. That ran into some snags with right-of-way acquisition and environmental concerns with, I believe, salamander and fairy shrimp. So that dragged on for a while. And then with negotiations with the new contract with the landfill operators, the project was put on hold, is my understanding, until those negotiations went on, since this was a component of those negotiations. And so for, in two thousand and fourteen, a project was done, which everybody's talked about, which goes out just a little bit east of the landfill and then up to about a half mile short of Fairview. That was a two-inch overlay with rubberized asphalt. That was completed in, I think, end of two thousand fourteen, early two thousand and fifteen. And that seems to be holding up pretty well. The PCI for that stretch of road right now is an eighty-seven, which is, is one of our better roads in the county.
What would be the cost to finish that overlay with the two-inch overlay rubberized asphalt?
Right. So, so let me get to that. So the, the two options, and they're not mutually exclusive, but the two options would be realignment and/or resurfacing the existing roadway. So to continue the realignment, we, we've reconnected and re-engaged with the environmental consultants. The cost for continuing that, to finish the environmental work, would be about eighty thousand dollars and would take about two years. The total estimated cost right now to do the realignment, all of the right-of-way is done, which is good news because that can be the most expensive and time-consuming process. But the total cost and the total estimated time for doing the realignment is about one and a half to two million dollars and anywhere from three to five years. So three years being the best. We have two years to continue environmental and then should be complete. And then another year to construct would be the best-case scenario. So that's option A. Doesn't mean that we can't do some resurfacing of the existing road and then do the realignment at a later date. The realignment, I think, is, is a good idea for safety concerns and something that we should consider pursuing for the next three to five years. But then to get back to your question, Supervisor, on resurfacing the half-mile of road, basically from Fairview East, right now, the estimate for that is about conservatively three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that would give us the same, same level of reconstruction that we got on the other section of road. So it'd be a two, two-inch overlay rubberized. What we do is what we call cold-in-place recycling. So we'll grind up the road that's currently there. I don't know exactly what the base, we'll have to do some sampling out there to see what the base structure is under there. And we may have to do some reconstruction of some, some of the base material, but then a two-inch overlay over that.
If, if we were to agree on the existing road to put the rubberized asphalt, what's the timeframe?
We'll have it done this year. That's why I'm recommend, I'm not recommending, but proposing that we could bump a couple of projects off of this current SB one project list for this, this coming summer to the tune of about three hundred to four hundred thousand.
So August, September, October, yeah?
Yeah.
Any questions from Peter Hernandez?
So are we, are we ready with our, our list to, you know, I know Supervisor Gilio really wants to try to capture these, or, you know, we, we want to capture these SB one funds from the state. And I know that there's a deadline that we have to meet.
Right. So, so this is the project list that's for this current fiscal year, for the projects that we're going to do this summer. So the, these have already been approved by the board and are already submitted to Caltrans. And so this is what we would go off of otherwise. So we can, we, we have the ability to modify the list at any time because the, the focus of the state is really just to get the SB one projects done. It's not really holding us to the projects that we actually say we're going to do. They want us to use the money and they want us to use it timely. So if we were to swap out one or two of these projects in exchange for doing John Smith, that's not a problem. We'll just notify the state and let them know that that's what we're doing. And then, once we make a decision about this, or if you want to make a decision about this and give us direction for this, then, then we can start the discussion about the project list for next fiscal year. That's due by May first.
Supervisor, still questions?
It's the, yeah, I guess the hardest part is, yeah, with the, I, I know the realignment is necessary for safety purposes, but I also know we need that road fixed like ASAP because I know that it's, it's in really rough shape. And, you know, the landfill part of it kind of makes it a sticking point because I know with that negotiations, there's, there should be obviously a mechanism where they, they support the funding to make that happen since the impacts are due to the, the trucks driving through there. So, so if there's a way to, you know, it seems like we have to have a contingency plan for the temporary and then, and then look at the long term and, and see how we, we do cost recovery.
Just for the record, I want to mention something and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is the landfill, did they pay for that rubberized two-inch overlay? And they could not go all the way to Fairview simply because of the realignment? So I, I just want to make sure we call.
Yeah, so I, I think what we're talking, Mr. Chair, I mean, what we're talking about is two different things.
No, I'm just saying what.
John Smith, yeah.
I'm just saying what Peter had said. I just want to make sure because he said the landfill should be paying for that other part. But they did, in theory.
And there's funds available for the realignment. And so that was the, that's really kind of the reason why we haven't touched that last piece because why we're going to spend, spend three hundred thousand or half a million when we're going to just go ahead and bypass that anyways. But the problem is, is it's three, five years and we, we dealt with fish and wildlife. There was engineering issues. There was kind of different things that kind of came up that's taken a long time. And then negotiations, obviously, with waste connections as well. But I think at this point, there's, it's really two different items here, in my opinion. This is, you know, we have enterprise funding that we could put to this. And there is funding that we're looking at that Waste Connections will, will have to cover definitely for the realignment. So anyways, that's what I wanted to share with the board.
Ray, can Ray correct me because his, he has memory of this. He was here. But it's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that the, the work that was done out there was, I think Waste Connections got a grant to pay for that and it was done with grant funding.
Cool. Supervisor Dela Cruz?
Yeah, I don't have a problem. We definitely need, I'm okay restructuring these to get the John Smith moving. But I think we also need to have a real serious conversation down the road about how we distribute it. Where should we use future money? But for now, let's just go with that.
Supervisor Patel?
Yeah, well, you know, fish and wildlife are, they absolutely care more about fairy shrimp than they do about human life. But with that said, I, I think we ought to be utilizing the funding that we have as efficiently as we possibly can. And I, I think if we stay on the current alignment of twenty-five, is that the ideal intersection? No, but I think it's a free up more funds to do some more paving elsewhere rather than spend a bunch, millions of dollars on mitigating fairy shrimp. And I, I, more money we could put to pavement, more money, we're better off. And that's why, you know, I, I kind of, as one supervisor, it's not in my district, but I think all of us use the landfill. We ought to go with the, you know, the more cost-effective route and that's the current alignment. and that's the current alignment and kind of sacrifice a little bit at the intersection. Terrible word to use, but that's kind of how I feel about things right now, rather than fight the state and have a four-year delay and fight with this road and people coming in here and the phone calls we get. SB one, Measure G, and the condition of, you know, of our roads, I know most of us get phone calls every day on it. I know it's driven you kind of nuts, John. I, you know, I'd like to see a little bit more to the list, a little bit more length and even with stuff on the come a bit, you know, be honest with you. And I know that's hard to do, but we have to be a lot more aggressive, even with our budget, as we kind of go forward. We should spend every cent we could possibly send to roads right now. This should be a standing art, I was talking with Supervisor Medina a little bit last night about it and I feel so strongly about this. We committed to tax measures, economic development. It's really focused on trying to kind of catch up. It's a decade, maybe longer, to even begin to catch up on our county roads and the maintenance. We're not going to do it all at one time and a lot of people expect a lot more from us. Should be a standing item on our agenda at the bare minimum, once a month, as far as updates from our COG representatives, from the rest of us that aren't on COG, what we're doing with lobbying for this improvement of our roads and for us to move forward. But I hope this is just the beginning of the conversation and we should be spending more than one point seven million. That's all. Thanks.
Supervisor Gilio?
Thank you Chairman Medina. So talk about SB one first. You know, I, these projects have been submitted going back seventeen, eighteen and this is something I've been unfortunately harping on and talking a lot about, the May first deadline. And I'm going to be in Sacramento tomorrow and Wednesday lobbying for the Central Coast Coalition for the more of the ten thousand foot view for funding. But I got to tell you, we need an SB one list that would knock your socks off. And literally, when I speak to our representatives, whether it's our assembly member or a senator, they're telling us that they're, the SB one folks, powers that be at CTC are looking to allocate additional projects. If you have urgent projects, if you have projects that are above and beyond the, you know, the two million dollars, I think we had a presentation, you know, the general two million dollars we're getting and the increase, I think that's going to go up to two point eight per year. They want to know that and they, we need to have a plan though. And if we don't have a plan, we're not going to end up getting those funds. And this is not anything new for you CAO Espinoza. I've talked about it a lot and probably with, probably three times this week and work on Tuesday. So we need to get a very comprehensive SB one list together and don't be afraid to ask for too much, because, you know, we need to put the ask out and then hopefully we can get some of it, right? If we get twenty percent of our ask, great. If we get fifty percent, great. You get ten percent. But if we don't ask for anything, or only ask for projects that we've asked for in the past, I think we're making a mistake as a county. We need to ask for as much as possible. And that's going to be a lot of work for you guys, because, you know, you got to come up with a plan. You got to tell, you know, why it's a priority, how many people travel on the road. You got to make a case for it. You can't just put a, you know, we need to fix Union Road. Well, why? You know, what does that road mean to us? So we need to make sure we have a detailed SB one plan, again, for May first. Hopefully, that plan comes to the board soon, right? I mean, so we can have some input on it as well. And then regarding John Smith Road in particular, I already expressed something earlier today, but I would like to say it one more time for my constituents, because they were very eager to have this on the agenda today. I had to unfortunately tell them after reading the agenda, talking to the CAO, that it was not on the agenda. So I think we would have had more people here to comment on the needs out there and what's happening. And then also, I spoke to Mr. Gerton about options and I think you actually told me that rubberized was not the way to go, because of the durability. And now I'm hearing it's the way to go. So I'm not sure where we're at. I'm not sure, you know, I'd like, I'd really like to see a budget, you know, like, this is what the demo is going to cost. This is what it would be if we did rubberize. This would be if we didn't do rubberize. This would be the length of the road that we can expect. These are all the questions that I'm being asked. And after what I received today, I'm not trying to offend you. I just don't have the ability to give those answers back to the community. Obviously, I want to move forward and fix the road. And I see two paths here and this is a decision that I'd like some input from the board on, because you guys have been doing, especially Jaime, Mark and Anthony Supervisor Patel, you guys have all been on this for a while. So do we continue with the realignment? And do we continue just going down that path slowly? And we fix the immediate need so that when and if maybe, you know, funds are available, we have a shovel-ready project, so to speak, and we put that on our SB one list for maybe not this year, but maybe next year or wherever? Do we keep going, because you've already spent so much time and effort on that realignment? Or do we just kill the realignment and just do the repave? And I just wanted to get some thoughts and opinions on that from staff and our board.
While you were talking, I jumped online and was doing some little bit of research. This whole thing started with a secret document in two thousand and two. It's two thousand and nineteen. Then in two thousand and thirteen, it was re-resurrected. That was almost six years ago. So if you want to wait another ten, fifteen years, we can just, you know, forget about the improvement and just wait for the realignment. But, you know, what I need is, I need that road fixed now for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. And if we want to continue down the realignment, that's a whole different subject for a different day.
I guess Chairman, real quick, do we do those parallel though? Do we keep the eighty-seven?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that right now. All I'm worried about is the immediate, you know, fixing something and then at a later date. I don't have that answer right now and I would probably let Anthony or Jaime talk to that. But the other thing that I'm frustrated about is, you know, I asked for a detailed report, John. It was very simple. I asked for it on March fifth. You said you cannot do that. You said you would do it on March nineteenth and we get verbal. I was expecting something in writing saying, okay, well, I talked to someone. They said it was so much per mile or it's just verbal. I mean, there's no substance. Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is all I get for a month? I just don't, I don't understand it. So we'll leave it, we'll leave it at that.
Okay, so there's a lot to unpack there, some questions that came up. So after this is the discussion for next year's project list. The direction from the board was not to bring a recommendation for projects that the board wanted to tell us, which projects you all, because you're talking to the community and which projects you think are the priority projects for the county. So we have a list of projects that the pavement management system recommends and that we would recommend to help frame the discussion. But we can, that's why we put it on here as direction from the board, so you all can give us direction on where you'd like to see the dollar spent on the roads for next year's project list.
And you're doing that after this, today? You're doing that?
Yeah, right after this. The reason that I'm framing this this way is because I got the sense that there was a sense of urgency for John Smith Road. And so that's why we're going back and talking about an already pre-approved program for SB one. Because if we want to get John Smith Road done this year, that's the funding source that I'm aware of that could do that for us. And so that's why we're proposing that to your board. If that's the direction you want to go, we can easily bump a few of these, one or two of these projects off of this list and delay it so that.
Ray, Enterprise Fund, can't we use the funding for that?
That's what I mentioned earlier.
So that's why, I guess, I'm looking at this stuff and.
If it's three hundred thousand, if it's about three hundred thousand dollars, we have plenty of funds in there to actually use for that.
When you say you're talking about.
Yeah, the integrated waste, the Enterprise Fund for John Smith, yeah. So that's what I would, you know, I think, that's what I would recommend, to keep this list whole. Add this project and utilize enterprise funds to pay for it.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chair, through the chair, that's a question I have, because I don't have it here, is do we have the funds and the enterprise funds? I was looking for that fiscal analysis.
Yeah, and that's what I think we don't have at this point, but I can tell you that I'm positive it's over the amount that we need for this.
Thank you.
The last time I looked.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Through the chair, can we put the discussion and direct staff to use the Enterprise Fund for John Smith at the next board meeting? Let's put that up on the agenda so we can talk about it and approve it. And then we'll start talking about the SB money later on.
Why can't we do that now?
I mean, yeah, if we can do it now, let's do it now.
Yeah, I want to do it now, if that's.
I just had one question for John. So, and maybe you could send this information after, I'll keep it short. You know, so what are the measurements we use or the, I forgot the organization you mentioned, how they prioritize, which roads should, you know, should get most looked at? You know, how do they figure out that math?
So we have a pavement management system.
Pavement management.
Yeah, which the county purchased, which analyzed the roads and graded the roads in terms of what condition they're in and what type of either preventative maintenance, reactive maintenance or complete reconstruction or rehab is required to bring them back up to standard. Our pavement management index for this county is between twenty-five and twenty-seven. So if you think of it as a grading curve scale, that's failing. We're in the very poor, very poor to poor. So when you get into that range, you're talking about reconstruction for most of your roads.
Can I get some of that info, John?
Sure, yeah, yeah, we'll share the report with you. So the, basically what you think about in that range is, at a minimum, you're talking a million dollars a mile. So you see the top project up there, Fairview Heavy Rehab, that's a little over a half a mile and it's a little over five hundred thousand dollars in estimated cost. So that's what we're talking about. So for two million dollars of funding, we're not talking a lot of road. We have four hundred and fifty-two miles of road that we have to maintain in this county. And if we're doing it at two miles a year, we're not going to make a dent in the projects. And the need far outweighs the funding that we have. And so I understand the frustration you all have, but I'm really limited on the resources that I have to address it. Same thing with staffing. That's why we're scrambling to get this kind of information to you, because Supervisor Medina hit the nail on the head with how long these things have been going on. When I came in into this position, I, we were dealing with decades of delayed need and delayed projects and stuff that needed to get going. We had ten bridge projects on the Caltrans inactive list. That meant we had seventy-five million dollars in projects that were at risk of being unfunded. That took a full year of full dedicated time to get those projects off of that list and to secure that funding and protect that funding. That's seventy-five million dollars in projects for the county that a year ago was going to go away. And so those are the things that we're trying to deal with every single day. So I understand a month seems like a long time, but it's really not in our world. We're scrambling to keep on top of everything. And I'm sorry Supervisor, if I misled you by saying that rubberized asphalt's not the way to go here, it's not my preferred choice. There's a myriad of different ways to pave a road. Rubberized asphalt was kind of all the rage about ten years ago, fifteen years ago, because, for sound qualities. And in certain areas, it makes perfect sense, because it really has a sound dampening effect. But we're also seeing that it doesn't last as long as some of the other options that we have. But it is a good option. And here, because we'd be connecting like to like, it's a good option.
Just one question. I know you had said Manning. How many positions do we have open right now that are on the website?
The one.
So we have, lack of Manning, but only one posted on the website?
I only have one vacant engineer position, but I only have three engineer positions total. So we have a senior engineer position that's open, that we got four, after the recruitment closed about a month ago, we got four applications.
And is that posted or not?
No, we're reviewing applications right now.
Okay.
We got four. Unfortunately, all from way out of the area.
Mr. Trevon May as well? I want to add, with regards to the direction that you're going to provide on this particular item for John Smith, staff recommendation, and this is the way the report's written, receive report on the status of SB one funded road projects and provide direction to staff. So if we go outside of that and use enterprise funds, we will have to bring it back to the board. But at least you provide us a direction that we will make sure that that item's back to you to move that project forward, utilizing those funds. So I just wanted to make sure the board's aware of that.
Yeah, and the project will need to be designed and engineered. So when we come back to approve plans and specs, we can do that at that time.
Yeah, I think, so it sounds like we can just do a consensus today that we would like to move forward with the heavy rehab, let's call it, and come back with some options. And then also the fiscal analysis that, because we don't have, we can't officially move forward today with the funding, because we're going to try to use enterprise funds for this. But I think we can give the head nod to start the process. Is that correct? And then we can actually have a detailed report on the next agenda.
That's correct.
What day will that be?
I'm going to let people know.
April second, thank you.
Okay, we want to talk about next year's projects?
I think I'll make a motion to codify it, if that's okay. Is that what you're asking for, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we need a motion for, just for staff direction? I don't know, I'd ask council.
What do you guys want? Sure, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to come back on April second with the, I'll spell it out here, clearly fiscal analysis for the project and what our funding options are. The options for paving, whether it be rubberized or non- rubberized and what the lifetimes of those different items are or options are, so we can make an educated decision to move forward.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero?
Mr. Chair, reference to this report, I would like to wait till the next board meeting and actually to allow Supervisor Peter Hernandez to understand that metrics that John was talking about.
The paving index?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. Table that.
Okay.
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 Sorry, could I get clarification on what that last direction was?
We're going to hold off that to the next meeting.
Hold off on which part?
This presentation, this report that you just presented to us.
On the John Smith discussion?
No, no, this, on this, this SB one.
The future projects?
Yeah, the future projects.
Well, the SB one will be back on April second. What you'll bring back is you'll bring back a detailed analysis along with the cost and then you'll also bring back the SB one two thousand.
Twenty?
Nineteen twenty, right? Yeah, nineteen twenty. When's the due date for that, John?
May first.
May first.
May first, so we have April second, then that gives you a month roughly to go back and figure out what you have to propose, right?
We have the proposal here, yeah.
Yes, but we're going to, I guess the idea there was we were going to look at it and try to jockey it?
Yeah, well, what we were looking for was input from the board on what roads you all would like to consider, because we just go by the pavement management system, because we're trying to maximize. So.
Yeah, I know you do.
Well, see, and that's what, that's what we're trying to get understanding from the board and direction from the board is if there are going to be issues, we could address it better if we know about it upfront.
I just, I mean, the seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen doesn't have anything in my district and I know there's maybe one, two roads, I get it. And then the twenty has nothing in my district and so, I mean, come on, guys, got to help me out here.
Well, you don't have that many roads to beat anywhere.
I acknowledge that. I, that's why I say, I acknowledge it, but you guys got to give me something.
On a percentage basis, as far as who's got, and Supervisor Gilio will have it all.
Well, that's part of the reason for the, like, for me, my question's.
Hernandez's district.
But that's still my question is, like, with the impacts. So I'm trying to understand how, you know, there's certain elements that I don't get. And, you know, because it's, if you're looking at traffic, you know, downtown, you know, within the city limits gets the most amount of traffic, I think, you know, instead of long stretches of roads. So from my education, I'd appreciate it.
You got to speak louder, Peter, otherwise she can get nineteen.
Well, we already said it, right? I.
So our pavement management system does not take into account city roads?
Yeah, so.
Just at the unincorporated, yeah.
Yeah, so, if I may on this, so I was approached, it's been several months now, but the city, and I think I passed along to CAO Espinoza as well as.
but the city, and I think I passed along to CAO Espinoza as well as Mr. Gerton, the city wanted to work on specifically probably for you, Peter, and for you, Jaime. They wanted to use their SB one in coordination with our SB one and do some joint projects that border the city slash county to maximize those, those dollars. And I sent that over to you guys, but I, I don't know where it went or if anything happened with it.
That could be part of the conversation to make it a little more complete.
Our may staff met with city staff and had that discussion and some of the recommendations are based on that discussion.
Okay, great.
Wow.
Will they place us?
They're already excluded.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Through, through the chair, you know, I, I think we have to look at the roads that have the most traffic on. Whether or not we, we could come in with a, a chip seal and get more miles out of the dollar too. And it should be just collector, I mean, not collector roads, major arterial type of roadways. And, you know, and the politics gotta stay out of it. That's my feeling about it.
I, I, I agree where you're coming from, but disrespect, I disagree with you that politics has to play out of it. We are all political animals, all of us, all five of us. And, and we wanna go back to our constituents and say, look, this is your tax dollars at work. And we're gonna make sure we try to get a max as much roads we can in, within our districts. But to say, to keep politics out of it, it's wrong. It is politics.
We don't have enough money to play politics. And, and, and the thing about it, everybody does drive through, you know, District 2 at some point. Everybody drives through District 1 as well. You know, you got some major roads, they, they live in your district, yes, but they're taking Fraser Lake, they're taking San Yost roads. And I, I think we just have to find a way to utilize, save as many miles as we possibly can on the, on, on those roads that is carrying a lot of commute traffic. And the commute traffic is not on the state highways.
So, if I have this straight, just make sure we're all on the same page here, is we'll bring back this report next meeting, which is April 2nd. He'll also bring back the John Smith looking at finalizing or the half-mile with rubberized asphalt or a different type of asphalt and either using SB one funds or preferably using the industry funds.
Absolutely.
Is that correct? All right. Do any public comment? Back to the board, okay. We're going into closed session, you, would you like to report, Barbara?
Yes. Number, item number 32, closed session pursuant to section 54956.95, liability claims. Claimant is the Shell Gonzalez, claim number TIBS 600154 and TIBR 550422. Agency claimed against San Benito County, member of Trindell Insurance Fund. Number 33, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to 54956.9, number cases one, authorized pursuant to D2 and E1 of 54956.9. Number 34, closed session, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code 54956.8. Property address is 33, 3239, South Side Road, APN 020320031. Agency negotiator Reyes Pinoza, Tracy Belton, Enrique Arreola, Barbara Thompson and Irma Valencia. Negotiating parties is the Farm Labor Association, Pat Words, President, under negotiation price and terms of payment. 35, closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure pursuant to D2E2 of 54956.9, number cases one, facts, certain circumstances, justifying closed session, potential for litigation relating to letter received on April 2, I mean, January 22nd and March 5th of 2019, requesting the county to enforce the zoning contract between the county and Richmark Corporation. And closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to D4, government code section 54956.9, point, point nine, number cases one.
And I'll be recusing myself of the farm contract?
Okay.
Any? Any public comment?
35.
Seeing none, we'll go into closed session.